Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. This is the Hudsonville City Commission regular session dated February 13, 2024. At this time, we'd like to have the Cub Scout PAC 3149 take the meeting.
Scout's move. Clean yard and streetsides. Scout's move. Color guard, fall. Color guard, across the colors. Color guard, close to colors. Clean yard and streetsides.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Yeah. You're all getting security. Go. You're still in the scout log.
Scouts, trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent.
Clean yard and scout log.
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to guard my country, to obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight.
Two. Color guard, this next.
I'd like to thank Cub Scout PAC 3149. It's interesting to see one of the adults here with his child was one of my Cub Scouts 22 years ago. So, we come full circle in our lives and it's very special to me to have them here to present and honor our nation and the Pledge of Allegiance and present the colors. Scouts, thank you very much for being here tonight. And you are not obligated to stay through the whole meeting. I'll leave it up to the parents to decide whether or not they're so excited. This moment, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. This moment, we'd like a moment of silence. I believe Commissioner Branson has a few words for us.
Before we have our moment of silence, we just want to take a moment and pause and acknowledge Joan Edson, who was mayor of Hudsonville in the 80s, and she has passed. I'll just remember her in our moment of silence. I had the privilege of just very, very briefly serving with her. We kind of passed, and so she did a wonderful job, and so we just want to acknowledge her tonight.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you, and thank you, Larry, for bringing that to attention, acknowledging Joan. There is a card here. Let me, if I had all the commissioners and the dais sign that, please send it down. At this time, there's an opportunity for public comments. I believe we, I think I'm aware of one, and we have our new intern from Grand Valley State. Gabe, are you here?
Yeah.
Come on up, talk to us. Gabe is a political science major. He's working with the city clerk, and I believe you're a junior, is that right? Are you local, are you from around here, or?
I'm from the Lansing area.
Lansing area.
Yeah.
Well, good. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I've always been interested in the humanities. I started business originally in college, and then decided to switch to political science, and find it very interesting. Hopefully, my end goal is to work either in a legislative committee for a state or a federal government, ideally in foreign affairs.
Good. Well, those are great aspirational goals. We need people like you to come up and follow us that choose to serve not for the glory but for the goodness of the community. Thank you for helping. I've already gotten really positive comments about what you brought to Jill. I think you've been a little bit of relief, Jill, to have somebody kind of help you out, particularly with some of the ballot stuff. I think you already got your hands full on ballots, didn't you? So, we appreciate that, much needed. And thank you, Andrea, for shepherding the intern process, and it does bring a lot of value to the community and to us as a commission. Anything to add to that, Tyler?
Look at personality. Thanks for coming in and being interested in what we do and how we do it. Enjoy the conversation, and it's great to see you, you know, ask questions and be involved in different elements of the city while outside of the clerk's office. You're definitely of value to the city, and I appreciate your efforts thus far.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. Good night, and we'll make this a short meeting for you, okay? It's going to be a record. Any other opportunity for public comments tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. There are three minutes from the City Commission regular session dated January 9th, Terrace Square Advisory Board dated January 10th, minutes of the Library Advisory Board, January 11th. There were no planning commission minutes because there wasn't a planning commission in the month of January. It does occasionally happen, not too often, but there are, those minutes are not present here. Are there any changes to those minutes? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, the consent agenda items carry. Moving on to new business, the January Public Safety Statistical Reports. Chief, you're up. Thank you for bringing in the vehicle with the new lights, sound off signal. Did sound off signal also do the vibrator thing? I didn't get an opportunity to get vibrated.
Yeah, it's all part of the package that they have on the side, and so, that's pretty bright.
Oh, yeah.
Turns out pretty nice.
I'm still kind of blank.
Yeah, probably after this afternoon, as we were programming them, I'm going like, okay, I think I burned out my reds. But, no, it'll be good. For the month of January, we had 61 calls for service, so it was a busy month. So, we're off to a busy, busy start again. Couple little items of note there on our training. January 22nd, we had Scott Carter back. He was the one that gave a presentation here, the City Commission. He did a training class, invited some neighboring departments, and went through a two-hour presentation on the responders' role on a train incident. So, that was good, good training there. Then the other item of note I was going to bring up is that we have one cadet, Montana Bar, and she is, we have more than one cadet, but we have one that is currently enrolled in the Ottawa County Fire Academy. So, she started the 1st of January, will probably wrap up in May, and it's every Tuesday and Thursday night, runs from about 6 until 10, every other Saturday. So, she's putting in quite a few hours right now going through the fire academy.
I understand you had one of your firefighters was hurt in an accident this last week. Is he okay?
Yeah, maybe a week and a half ago.
Okay.
He was in his, he was in a school vehicle. He was involved in a crash in Jamestown Township. He's doing okay, so everything's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
We expect him back, and he'll be back in service?
He's back to work already, so things are good.
Also, you had a rather significant call out this weekend with the fire in Granville.
We did. We were in Granville Friday night for a few hours. That was quite the fire at their stores facility. They had Granville, Wyoming, two stations, Georgetown, Austin, Jamestown.
When was the last time you got called out to Granville, though? That's...
It's been a while.
Been a while.
Yeah.
So, it's nice to have that agreement with the other communities.
We did a little game of moving the marbles around, so Blenheim came in to cover some of Georgetown, Zeeland Township came in to cover some of Hudsonville and Jamestown. So, we just kind of moved pieces around and made sure we had ample coverage for the night.
Very good. They figure out what the cause of that fire was?
I haven't heard.
That was huge.
Yeah, I haven't heard.
Huge. It must have been flammable, it had to be, I would think.
Yeah.
Something weird. Any questions for the chief on fire department? Thanks, chief. Have a good evening, and don't wear out those lights, please. Sergeant, good evening.
Good evening.
We all have ties on.
Well, there was a story about that earlier. It's called sanitary conditions. Somebody did. Yeah, so month of January, 222 calls for service. Some big highlights for me that I'm really excited about is a new person joining our team. Deputy Dave Tuttle is joining us. He's been here a little over 20 years at the sheriff's office, and most of his time was spent in community policing in Zeeland Township, and the last 10 or so years was he was an accident reconstructionist. So, he dealt with accidents and all that stuff all throughout the county, as well as traffic enforcement. He's very knowledgeable on traffic laws, and he is excited to be here, and I'm going to have at least five years out of here, so I'm really excited about that. So, he's going to be a great addition. January, we also did in-service. Every deputy went through a 12-hour in-service. Some of those topics was getting real personal with canine units. We've always been under the impression that we can't touch the dogs, can't look at the dogs, can't talk to the dogs, and the training has gotten so much better that if the handler is hurt, somebody needs to take care of that dog. Someone threw a whole bunch of steps on how to take care of their dogs, how to get them out of the cars, just because we've always been so afraid of those dogs, and they've been trained so much differently. So, it was really good training as well as jujitsu. So, this guy was rolling around on a mat for a while. He did okay. There's a, attached to this, I think there's a couple diagrams. I added some mapping from traffic crashes. I know you guys were somewhat interested in seeing some of the traffic stats for the restriping project. So, the blue dots and the red, yellow dots, those are traffic crashes. That is 2023, the month of January. I think that was a total of seven traffic crashes. This is January of 2024, there's two dots in that area. Both of those were rear-end crashes. So, none of them had been to do with sideswipes or anything besides that, they're just rear-end accidents. So, right now, if you go from seven to two, I think that's a pretty good success rate already. So, I'll continue to provide those, at least for the next few months, just so we get a good handle on what's actually happening. Now, obviously, I can't predict weather. Sometimes there's things that happen that's going to cause more traffic crashes, not necessarily because of the restriping or because of weather. So, we did have some weather in January, and we've had two crashes in that section, so not too bad. Any questions on that at all?
So, what you're saying is our bold action to restripe had a significant impact on people's lives?
If you look at those numbers, absolutely.
Cause and effect.
Speeds are down and traffic crashes are down, so...
That's great news. Now, you have Sheriff Kempker and the undersheriff are both retiring, is that correct?
That is correct.
And our new sheriff then will be elected on a ballot in November, correct?
Well, I think it'll be the August primary.
The August primary.
Yes.
And the current undersheriff that's replacing Val is who? DeBoer?
DeBoer.
Eric, is it Eric?
Yep, Eric.
Eric DeBoer, right. Okay. Good. Hopefully, we get to meet him sometime.
Yeah, we'll see how this all goes.
Yeah, I think he's going to shake out here a little bit. Very good. Thank you, Sheriff. Dave, another guy without a tie, what's up with that?
I was just yacking on you. I think they were even.
I like it. Shot across the bow.
We say this, people, because we rarely wear ties in this dais, but today we happened to be because it was our picture day, so, like dressing your kid up going to school for picture day at school. Remember those days, Dave?
Oh, yeah, vaguely. Y'all seem to clean up all right, so what's going on? All right, so my department in January, we didn't have a staff meeting because it fell on New Year's Day, and it seems that when the department falls on a holiday, they'd rather spend the time at home than with me. Thinking about it, I'd make the same choice, so generally, if we don't have a, if it's not a busy season, we don't have a meeting on a holiday. Labor Day, we'll move that to a different day because that's part of our busy season, but January, other than, you know, this January, we don't do a whole lot. The severe weather event, so as some of you, maybe most of you know, I was out of town during that time, and JJ handled that. I think he did quite well. He was on the daily briefings with the county every morning during that event, and he was in between those, he was in communication with county emergency management and made sure that we were prepared to provide warming space for people if they needed it. And he also had our team ready. They made sure they had their vehicles fueled and warm weather or warm clothing ready just in case we needed to go out and secure downed power lines. I think we didn't have to do, or I should say, they didn't have to do any of that, but I want to give kudos to JJ. He did a great job making sure the team was prepared for that. And, yeah, we had a debriefing from that at the February department meeting, and no major things to come out of it. Communication was very well. We also did the CSX training. We will have a kind of a, JJ's going to share out what he learned at that training at our next department meeting, so the rest of us who weren't able to be there will get some benefit from it as well. Any questions?
Hearing none, thanks, Dave. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to finance, city treasurer, monthly report. You're up, Andrew.
All right. Report's still standard, nothing out of the ordinary. We got the grant spreadsheet here, and of note with that is Sarah requested two grants, one with MISHDA and one with the MEDC. So, the MISHDA one, we got notice that it was approved already, so that's $50,000 towards the master plan rewrite, which we were planning to spend out of the general fund, so that's $50,000 that we don't have to spend, so that's great. And then also with the MEDC, it's $50,000 towards the edits of the zoning ordinance, so that would be a 25-75 split for that one. We haven't heard back yet on that one, but hopefully going to be good news with that one as well. So, yeah, good job for Sarah and the planning and zoning department with their grant writing. And then, any questions on the financials for this last month?
Questions or discussion on the grant spreadsheet? I know I've been pushing this for several months now, but I think it's a brag point for the staff and for the community at whole, how there's a lot of money out there on the table, and if you're good, you can grab it. And Tyler's demonstrated the tenacity to go after it. So, Tyler, thank you and the staff, you know, I wish I could write them all a bonus check, but obviously I can't, but, you know, they need to know how much of an impact this has on us and the community, so make sure, you know, Sarah's been doing a great job for us on grabbing some of these. And of course, I'm always sending you stuff, too. I don't know whether you see that. I think we got Jeremy sent something, I think, this week, too, some ideas he had. But it makes a huge difference. I don't think, we never, I don't think fully comprehended it ever since I've been here, the impact getting grants has on the budget and the opportunity it brings to the community. Any discussion from the... Very well. Anything else, Andrew, you want to?
Nothing else. I'll hope you make it a short meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to approving the... You know I like brevity. Moving on to payment of the bills, is there a motion?
Motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $701,485 and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support. So, movement support and discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to item number eight, ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated cleaning house in the amount of $637,311.47, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. So, movement support and discussion? Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Distribute the funds. Moving on to item number nine, appointment to boards and commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment to the board of Terrace Square Board, Dr. Fernando Solis.
Support. So, movement support. Doc, you want to come and introduce yourself? I was just talking to Doc shortly before we started the meeting about his bio saying he's purposely has a practice reaching out to our Hispanic community because...
You're Spanish-speaking, aren't you?
They need the service probably more than us, white people, I should say, and we need to care for our brothers and sisters that don't have a mastered language, that you obviously do with Spanish, and that's just a wonderful thing you're bringing to the community, and I...
Yeah, I've been practicing here in Hudsonville, kind of practiced for four years now, and we just bought the practice in August, so now proud owner, now part of the Hudsonville area, so thank you for welcoming me into the board for Terrace Square. I really appreciate it, looking forward to working with you guys as many as possible, trying to be as active in the community as possible.
Thank you for stepping up and being on the board. Any questions or discussion? I think, Jack, you, were you the one that nominated him originally? Was it you, Dan? Yeah, Dan.
I did, yes. Yeah, I've just been going there, and my wife has been going there for a number of years, and he's just, to both of us, expressed an interest in being more involved in the community, and especially with his proximity of his business to everything that's going on in the downtown and across the street from Terrace Square, and, you know, the development of the former co-op property. He just really wanted to be a part of that and be involved in the community, and so I just said, hey, would you be interested in being a part, if you want to be involved, you know, we've got some openings on Terrace Square, and he said he would love to do that. So, I said, well, let's make it happen.
Really, really appreciate it. Do you want to introduce your guests that you have here, too?
This is my wife, Sonia.
Hi, I'm Sonia Felice.
Very good.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks. Thanks, Doc. It's motions on the floor. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Thanks, Doc, for serving our community. Moving on to the Metro Act permit, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 24-1784, issuing a Metro Act right-of-way permit for Crown Castle LLC as submitted.
Second motion. It's been movement supported. Tyler, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Metro Act permit. Sorry, I was taking notes. We will see a handful of these permits come through. It's routine business. One thing that we are doing, though, staff, on their own, staff-driven, when I was out of town, we've started a monthly construction review meeting to talk about permitting, planning, zoning, and status of various projects and the needs of various department heads' involvement, such as the fire chief for inspections, Bob Miller, as it relates to utilities, obviously Dan Strickord, as it relates to planning and zoning. But it's an opportunity for us to get together after our staffing meeting once a month to review a slew of issues. The last meeting took roughly two hours, but it ensures that staff is keeping up to date on projects, and the goal here is to eliminate things that may fall through the cracks. As part of that is going through potential permitting of utilities, what they want to do, and how that corresponds and translates to the city's code of ordinances with, especially with downtown development, I'm talking about the future implementation of the village green. It's important that we start planning yesterday and continue planning 100 years from now. So, this group, we're still solidifying what we do and what we tackle, but as part of this, this is routine business, but it's much bigger than that with how we're handling it.
Where are they looking at running?
I don't have that answer up right now. I can get that to you, Commissioner. We reviewed it last week, but I'm going to give you the answer.
Counselor, you got anything to add to that? Jessica? Nope. Do these normally go by, get flagged through you? Do you take a look at them, or no?
You know, sometimes, but these Metro Act permits are really standard. You essentially pick a bilateral or unilateral, and as long as they have submitted a complete application, you have to approve them. If you do nothing, within 120 days, they're presumed approved, so...
It's a boilerplate, then.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries, and I assume I'll get a copy of that to probably sign sometime this week, then Jill, or next week. Before I ask for motion, do you, John, let's just go down the dais. Tobin?
Just a quick note, in case you were record chasing, Phil's was quicker at 21 minutes. You are over that now, so...
Are you saying I talk too much?
I'm just saying facts at all.
Dave?
But well done.
Let's not drag the, this outing longer.
I'm happy, thank you.
I know you're happy.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor?
No.
We'll get back to you. Larry?
Do you want to talk about the...
Let me talk to...
Okay. I got you.
You're good?
Yep.
I have nothing.
How long have you been here, Tyler?
I've been here one year and five days.
One year and five days. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
What does that look for, Jill?
It's 12 days.
I wasn't counting the weekends, but I am to you.
Anything constructive?
Presidential primary in two weeks.
Presidential primary in two weeks.
Yes, so if you want a work session, it has to be a different day.
I don't think we have, do we have work session? Do we need to have one in February?
We'll have a loaded March work session. There's the election in February, we have a commissioner out of town late in February, so...
Yeah, Jack's out of town for a while, so we'll roll this on to the March.
And it will be a lengthy meeting. We'll provide dinner. It will be a long meeting.
All right. Once, why you going to have this? Anything else you have on your list?
Yeah, I'll go as quickly as possible to keep up with the trajectory of the meeting. I had the planning and zoning department work on potential revisions or best practices or concerns with the city's side ordinance with specific detail to give into the downtown area. That memo is on my desk. I have not reviewed it as I've been out of the office, more than I would have liked the previous month. Equally, with regards to the alcohol board, staff's an update. I know city staff has been in contact with counsel on that. I will review that, and we will have an update on that. We'll be giving the memo, as well as a brief presentation of where we can go from here with those two documents at your March workshop. On January 2nd, the DDA approved the selling of a property that is DDA-owned at 32nd and Prospect Street. We're hammering out the purchase agreement details, I had a brief conversation with Jessica this afternoon, and we'll be moving forward with that development. There's two key items left, if you recall, one would be a P A two-ten tax abatement, and the other one would be obviously approval through the Planning Commission. We had a very informal review with the Planning Commission on that in December, December? And really want to give a shout out to our Planning Commission to work with the developer on some of the challenges. I've been involved in the emails, and a lot of good information is being discussed, and I think that's a testament to the strength of the Planning Commission. I am working on basically a one-to-two pager of the newly to be created at the city commission's discretion of a Economic Development Committee, and what that will look like, and how we can utilize city personnel, staff, the elected officials, and members of the community, as we talk about business recruitment, business retention, economic development, linking local funds, state funds, excuse me, and federal funds to developers. That's an area that we are very busy on, and frankly, we need to do better at. And so this will give us an opportunity to informally formalize a structure of that, and getting the right people at the table where we are ready to meet the needs of prospective businesses and our current businesses as well. We'll have more discussion on that at your March workshop. I received the final renderings with regards to the Library and Community Center from Progressive AE. Former Commissioner Phil R. is still working with me on that, a lot of good information. We've met with Larry Branson a couple of times. The final renderings have, were submitted. Phil and I gave some of our thoughts using the committee's input from previous discussions, and we'll have a final package to you anytime now. And by all means, we'll share that with the city commission and members of the public as well. Keep in mind, it's a visioning document of what could be with some details, but nonetheless, excited to share that with you all. You may have mentioned in passing, I'm working with a member of Progressive AE with regard to some traffic consulting, downtown parking. There are positive and negative externalities due to the Thirty-second Road Repavement Project, we can call it a road diet, and looking at those for the future, while also factoring in the left-turn lane at New Holland and Thirty-second, the Barry Allen Street alignment, and other neighborhoods that have been impacted by that. Kind of like the human body, if something, you know, you sprain something, it can affect something else. So we want to be forward-thinking on this, and it works out perfectly as we look to move forward with the master plan. That'll be on your, I believe, your March regular agenda meeting. So I'll be working with that individual, what that looks like, I'm unaware yet, but there's some expertise that would prove very valuable to the city as we continue to move forward. Jill, Jill has done a great job of assembling a very large document with regards to contracts and agreements that the city has. It's very easy to forget about some contracts and agreement if they are on a perpetual basis. Granted, we have laws that govern the length of those, some of those we need to look into, we may need to refresh. What Jill and I have done is gone through and have prioritized those, we will do those in chunks based on what we believe should be tackled first. So we may have some updated agreements to put forth, this is just good housekeeping, and it's been mentioned before and we're getting to it.
How many contracts we have, do you know?
A lot.
What, ten, twenty, thirty?
Depends on if you want to do all the consumer lights by themselves.
Each light has its own contract? Oh my gosh. Not those, just like lawn mowing and the I T.
Off the top of my head, I.
Sheriff?
Yeah. A lot, probably at least twenty, at least.
Yeah, I'm in the twenty to forty range. You know, just good housekeeping and.
Yeah, we need to track.
And frankly, with the new finance director and a newish city manager, it'd be good for us to get some details of some of those agreements as well, and see where we can do better, where there are cost savings, or if anything, make sure that we are following in line with any relevant state statute, et cetera. Want to give a shout out to Chief Essenberg, one thing he failed to mention in his humbleness is that he has gone above and beyond, and working on the electrical side as far as the new command vehicle is concerned. In terms of being in very tight places, working on wires, I can't go past that chief. But he has given a lot of extra time and effort doing that himself due to an agreement that fell through. He's been working with a couple vendors on that. I offered to see where the city can step in and pay for it, and using his personal skillset, he's done an amazing job, so kudos to you, chief.
He also had a career in electronics already, so.
That might have helped. I was out of the office January tenth through the sixteenth when we got hit with that blizzard, and I want to commend Dave Dahl and his team, JJ as well, Chief Essenberg, Bob Miller, Sergeant Steinigah. I was out of the state, I was in constant contact with our team up here, although I couldn't see what was going on, and just want to give a shout out to those guys in terms of their professionalism and their execution in my absence. And I think that's the strength of the city, top-down, east-west, of the people that we have. We didn't miss a beat, and there was a lot of snow. So kudos to you guys, and thank you for working together. One more update, then we'll get to a project update. With the new finance and personnel committees, I've been talking with staff about how better we can execute and utilize those committees. The city is moving at a very fast pace as we work towards the visions discussed in the master plan and the strategic plan. As such, I'm going to be recommending each committee schedule four regular meetings, so quarterly meetings throughout the year. It'll allow us to bring things to that group for discussion and input, potentially from there, an action item by the city commission or a workshop. But I think keeping the committees involved and up to date on what we're doing is important, especially at the speed that we are moving. So those committees can choose not to meet that often, we can always cancel meetings, but that will be my recommendation, we'll have something coming out in the next week or so. Finally, I want to give an update on a slew of capital improvement projects in which the city is engaged in. Bob Miller and I meet with the city engineer once a month, we started this about four or five months ago, to get constant updates on where we're at and what's needed, and equally allow for better collaboration between department heads, developers, but in this case, our capital improvement projects. The Buttermilk Creek Restrooms are now in a phase being approved by the M D and R, all engineering is completed with the specifications that were discussed at the city commission meeting. We're looking at roughly one more week for a turnaround before we go bid. Anticipated completion will be late summer, fall of 2024. I've had several conversations with the M D and R on that, I believe our project is going to hit all the grant specifications. And just a reminder, that was a $150,000 matching grant we got from the Michigan Department of Metro Resources. Once we, once those go to bid, we probably won't make March, maybe on the April regular city commission agenda. There may be need or reason to call a special meeting for that approval, I don't know that at this time. But we're good to go there for the new parking lot and the restrooms to really enhance that area. As far as the Barry Allen and the Barry and Allen Street realignment goes, it took nine months to get the necessary permit from Eagle with regards to the box culvert. I appreciate Bob Miller and Don DeVries, our engineer, working with Eagle on that project, a lot of hydroflow testing, making sure that we're protecting the flow of water from erosion, and making sure that the structure will maintain viability through perpetuity. But nine months was a little bit longer than we had wanted, but we're there. The project is out to bid, we have a bid opening on February twenty-eighth, it was a four-week bid advertisement. We'll look to approve that at the March thirteenth city commission meeting. Just a reminder, the. We'll have a pre-construction meeting in March and April, the project's to be completed by the start of school of the next school year, that is the target, and Bob and I have been adamant on that. Barry will be closed for through traffic during construction, and I have a little note here, it's an eighteen-foot wide box culvert, eleven feet high, which is one of the larger ones they make, so.
You know, I just, I know Larry and Dan, I know how you feel, but this has been so long in the make that I just can't believe we actually arrived. It's just, it's huge, it's huge. It's going to change the dynamics of our city when we get to that one light, and it's just the safety aspect. But this is something we have wanted ever since I've been sitting up here for ten years, and Larry, you know, this is, this has been, this has been a major issue in our community. And to see that we're finally approaching the finish line, Tyler, is, and your work through with Eagle and getting that permit and the box culvert was huge. So we do appreciate this immensely, it has not been an easy thing for us to pull off.
So we'll look at a construction period of roughly four months, and with completion targeted by August. And again, with the road diet too, that'll assist with that.
It's just huge, huge.
For, as far as the New Holland and Thirty-second Avenue turn lane go, the project starts in June, in June, after school lets out. We're looking at a, two months for completion, so again, that will put us prior to school starting. We're gonna have a pre-construction meeting in April for that, and. Yeah, the bid that was approved was six percent over the engineer's estimate. Fortunately, through some value budgeting, working with Andrew, we're more than capable to absorb that six percent increase there. But again, another project that's been on the docket that we'll look to have completed by the end of summer. As far as the drinking, drinking system material inventory update as part of Eagle's lead and copper rules, Plumbers Incorporated has completed all one hundred and ninety-two exterior pothole checks, again, as part of the lead and copper rules. There's a few more that may need to be done because of inside access, but for all intents and purposes, we're done with that. As of last note, we had nineteen homes that we still need to do interior inspections for, and out of one ninety-two, that is very impressive, some communities.
How many, how many did we find copper or lead?
We had one, however, it's kind of a unique situation because it was part of a well, which means it still needed to be, it still needed to be checked per our lead and copper. But to my knowledge, right now, the city is safe when it comes to lead lines, we're very fortunate. Now, that's preliminary, but what we wanted to hear nonetheless.
We probably need to get something in the newsletter on that someday, so people know that we have good pipes and good water in our city. Because there's, there's a history in Michigan.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't want to be that, we don't want to be that city.
Just taking a note here, yeah, we'll get something in the newsletter, probably not the spring edition, I don't think will be there yet, but we'll give some good information. And the drinking, the annual drinking water report that we must file every year through Eagle is on the city's website, so by all means, I encourage anyone to check that out if you're looking for some light bedtime reading. I'm almost done, I promise. As part of the fiscal year budget this year, we had six hundred thousand budgeted with regards to meter changeout, adaptive technology, remote signaling for water reads, it's a more efficient read, it's a more timely read. Some of the vendors that we're looking at have remote access for real-time usability by the customer, so you can check your water, see what your water usage is to cut down on the bill. Bob's working on the R F P, Don and Jessica, Jessica, if you haven't, we'll be reviewing that, and we'll look to go to bid there. There's a lot of different options there, Bob Miller is knee-deep in that, but this technology not only saves a lot of money in terms of labor, it provides real-time access for city staff and customers as well. And then finally, I have an update from Chris Venecloso with regards to Terra Station. The P U D documents and applications were submitted to the city on February seventh, as anticipated. Building floor plans, elevations, and civil design were included. Staff has a meeting tomorrow to look at those, it will be every bit of a two-hour meeting, there'll be about six of us in the room to really give a good look at that before it goes to the Planning Commission at their meeting next week. The M E D C board packet was submitted on January thirty-first for March twenty-six, Michigan Strategic Fund Board Meeting, which will give the green light on the one point two million dollar grant that the project is seeking. The appraisal and bank commitments are underway, and Chris informs that we're on track for closing in accordance with the purchase agreement, with the assumption that all approvals and everything that we believe is going in the right direction right now cease fruition. So the goal is still to break ground in late spring or early summer this year. And if you haven't noticed, there's a dumpster at the Terra, the former Farmers Co-op property. Asbestos check on a majority of the project has gone through the state permitting process, the ten-day window, and I believe Bob told me we'll be looking to start demolition next week. We also had to get another Phase One environmental assessment done, ours that was done did not hit the time permits as it relates to the grant to Ottawa County. So we had a little bit of a slowdown there, but I'll look for some progress to start being done at the property, continuing for roughly two years. That was a lot thrown at you, if there's any questions, concerns, I'm more than happy to take those now. If not, shoot me an email and I'll look to get your answer.
I just want to provide a comment on the Buttermilk Creek bathroom. The other half of that was the money received from the sale of the old baseball property on Hill, what is it?
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest, that goes back five, six years, were you even here on that when we did it? Dave, I don't think, were you?
I wasn't on the commission.
But yeah, but that was rather controversial, we sold that ballpark, but we put that money set aside for this purpose, that it would be recycled back into the parks and recs, and here now we got a bathroom that will be with us for a long, long time, and it will be used. So it's a huge, huge addition to that community to have the bathroom on that, on that walkway.
Was there a conversation about the fishing dock being a part of that too? Or where is that, has there been any conversation on that anymore?
We were gonna, we own the fishing dock now or no, is that ours?
So that will be one of the next elements Bob and Don and I talked about at our last meeting, it will not be part of this project. And I got to do a little bit of deep digging to see where we're at with that and C I P. I can provide more information with that, but it has been discussed, but we're at the very early level.
Fishing dock you referenced, was that by the new bathroom, that?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that they're supposed to hand it off to us at some point, but I don't know if we've been anything formal on that, I believe.
I just haven't heard about it in a while.
Yeah, that may be something that the planning needs to just, that's before you, you wouldn't know about this, but that was all part of that discussion. Anything from any of the department heads in the? Don't act so enthused, Mary. The only thing I have to add tonight is we had a really good meeting this week, a couple of commissioners were there, Larry and Jack, were you there Dan? With W M X, you two were there though. And Patrick Waterman, who, you know, our previous city manager was there, even though he's in Wyoming, he still wants to drive this project. It's near and dear to his heart, and we put a lot of work into it before it stalled during COVID. But there is major traction now, as I can say, that people are enthused. I think Senator Victory is there, he was nodding his head about the one point two million that would take to kick it off. There was just a lot of, I got a really positive feeling, it's one of those meetings you really sense that this is really not going to happen. And we know transportation's a major barrier to our workforce and our families here, and this is just a small piece of that, that fix that we need in the community, besides maybe some daycare opportunities that David and I have been working on too. So I'm sure you'll be at some point talking to us more about that, but that's still, the Outdoor Discovery Center is still a very active project. There's been some changes to that, the layout, but we sense that we'll be moving forward. The big one was that the location changed to the, the location down by the trailer park and not on the Far East Side. That did, we did, he did determine that was a better location. The only one thing I want to talk about briefly, I think you guys have, the commissioners have seen some email correspondence about, I've been a little bit pesty about this whole parliamentarian thing, and I think it just, a lot of you know how I feel, that Good Roberts rules in a meeting is a backstop to tyranny. We get along quite well now, we have good meetings, but there's nothing that can't be said that it can't change. And we're duty-bound to make sure that we have that backstop to tyranny on future commissions. And that's why I'm pushing to have a parliamentarian person assigned to the commission. And I think Larry has gone through the training, he's probably the most experienced up here for having meetings. He's indicated to me he'd be willing to service a parliamentarian for us, but at some point, I would think that one of the newer commissioners would, might want to get that training so that we have that in the queue, because you're going to be here a long time, and we need that expertise on this dais, because here again, it's a protection, it's a backstop to tyranny, guys, and we know what, we've seen what's happened in other commissions and how they've gone awry. That's why I'm kind of pesty about it, because I'm not going to be here forever. In fact, I might not be very long, I don't know. So that's why, so I would, maybe next time we could put him on, have a motion and just assign him formally as a parliamentarian. Larry's indicated that, unless there's somebody else here that would like to fill that role, but I think Larry is probably the most able right now. Larry?
Yeah, I went to additional training for a whole Saturday, and had quite a bit of conversation with Jill and some with Tyler, and would, yeah, really encourage us, it gets a lot of formality, but I think it sets good precedence, and it makes a clerk's job easier if we had some formality to it, and if we just make it something that we do by habit. So I would start encouraging us to do that, and moving in that direction. So we'll discuss that, I got some additional information beyond that, how we can proceed, and how we should maybe formalize our meetings a little bit differently.
Any other discussion on that? And I also saw some of you playing with the cards here, thanks for those, these are really handy, and everybody should have got some in their mailbox, the cards. They go back, I think, almost ten years now, but I add Tyler reprint them out, because it's a handy thing to have in your pocket when you ever have to speak in public, you can pull this out, and this really defines everything you ever need to know when you're talking in public about what we are as a commission, the, our four visions of the master plan, which would be the connected, vibrant, distinctive, and livable, so. Yeah.
We have more.
And we have more?
So if you need more, I'm talking. So if you need more, come talk to me in my office. And Mr. Mayor, one thing, as, as far as the parliamentarian, uh, position, um, I made some calls and some contacts, and, um, there's an opportunity through the Michigan State University Extension at a very affordable rate. Um, so one of my colleagues has used extensively, uh, to come in and, um, as one of our trainings to be scheduled strictly on that, um, some Robert's rules and do more of a deep dive. And from there, we can explore certifications, and as we talk about how that, how that grows, um, you know, there's some opportunity for us as a unit, um, to be able to grow. So, um, I got that email today. I'm not talking to the gal from Michigan State, but it's something I'm looking into to, to support this.
Counselor, I mean, you, you, you sit in a lot of these kind of meetings, and you know what I'm driving at, why it's important to.
Yeah, absolutely. And they all sort of lead back to the Open Meetings Act and Public Records under the Freedom of Information Act. So, um, yeah, absolutely.
Meeting discipline is pretty important.
Mm-hmm.
Particularly if you get some anarchia, anarchia up here, it's, it's the backstop.
It's a slippery slope.
It gets to be really slippery. We've seen that happen in some places. I have nothing else. Dick, maybe you want to sign this for, uh, for Joe before we leave? I'll just leave it up here for you. Okay? Anything else? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn? Come on, we're trying to set a record here.
Make a motion to adjourn. Support.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you.